This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
It's six o'clock. Welcome, everybody. This is actually a public hearing. So before we start our regular city council meeting, we have a public hearing to deal with an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code, and I'll call that meeting to order. And we have full attendance. All council members are here for the public hearing. And then unless Jeff is on, I can you?
I can give an overview. Yeah, Jeff is not. He had another meeting tonight at six, so I'll take this one tonight. So this is a public hearing to discuss an action that Plan Commission took, last Plan Commission meeting, and it is a building design standard section of Chapter 17 in the ordinance. That has to do with the percentage of garage facing the street and the allowance for that. So it used to be in our new code, which we adopted in November, it was a 50% allowance. That had never been in it in the past, going back 40 years. This is the first time we had it in it. We've always said as Plan Commissioners and as staff, as we work through this new code, we're going to have real life examples that come, and we're going to say, hey, is that what we truly intended to have happened or not? This is one of those real life examples. We had a good discussion about it at Plan Commission. We're coming forward with an amended version of that section of the ordinance. So you'll hear more about. We're suggesting moving it from 50% to 70%. And I'll get more into the detail later in the meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. And just one other thing before we open it up. Think about the possibility of suspending our normal rules on that, too, where it takes two, first and second reading of that. There is a little bit of an urgency on it, and it's quite honestly a change that that is different than what we've, as Aaron has said, over the last 40 years. So not a complete urgency, but just a thought that we might want to suspend the first reading of that ordinance. But and we'll talk about that a little bit more also as we get into the meeting. So, Aaron, thank you. At this time, then, we will take testimony in favor of the subject. If there's anybody that would like to give testimony, please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of the ordinance change? Hearing none. Any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition of this ordinance change? Okay, hearing none. I declare this hearing closed at 6:03 PM. All right, next up, we have the regular city council meeting. And I'll just give Sandy a second here. All right, awesome. Welcome to tonight's City of Wapaka regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 15, 2021, and it is 6:04 PM. And I'll call this meeting to order by starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever, and just for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meetings, the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right, thanks, Sandy. And also, would you take a role?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
10 present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. And also, as I've done for the last few months, also introduce staff. So we have Erin Johnson on my left, our city administrator, Sandy Stibbs, our city clerk, Kathy Kaza is our finance director treasurer, Peg Barrington, our director of the library, Tom Hart, our city attorney, Justin Behrens, director of Public Works, Andrew Whitman, Parks and Recreation Director, and Paul Benchwell, Sergeant, well, Benchwell, who is sitting in for Brian Hozell, who's on vacation this week. Welcome, Paul. And Josh Warner, again, who's behind the curtains. And I don't think we have anybody on. Erin, you didn't think anybody was on?
Nope. We have no one joining us via Teams.
All right. A little bit closer to normalcy again. It's nice to see. All right, you have a consent agenda. And Sandy, you have one addition to that?
I do. Under letter A, number seven, monthly reports, the city administrator's report was uploaded to the city website.
All right, that's the one addition. Remember, with consent agenda, we just vote on one, with one motion on all of these items, including that one addition, unless there's a council member that would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda, and then we would discuss that item individually under the regular agenda. Anybody that'd like to see anything move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. And then, under the regular agenda, Sandy?
Yes, under number 10, the annual TID report was uploaded to the city website.
All right, and that's just the one addition there. We're going to try and stay in the same flow that we have set up on the agenda. So we would just need a motion to approve the agenda so we can get going here.
Second.
Motion by Keela, and second by, I didn't, Fair, that we approve the regular agenda as with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Moving on, non agenda items and announcements. We actually have in our audience tonight, a presentation from Foundations for Living. We have Wilma Akright and Bev Lewis, but we also have a third here, too, tonight. So if you want, ladies, if you want to just step up to the podium, and please use the...
Yeah, I did talk to him. Josh is in the back. He'll probably be coming forward in about one second.
We'd like to do a PowerPoint if we can. If we can't, then all my work will just keep me on track.
He'll be here in a second. In the meantime, how about if you just introduce yourselves?
Oh, yeah. I'm Wilma Akright. I'm the executive director at Foundations for Living.
Please use the microphone as much as you can, too. Thank you.
Again, I'm Wilma Akright. I'm the executive director at Foundations for Living.
And I'm Bev Lewis, the chairperson of the Board of Directors for Foundations for Living.
Jill Amos Polifka, caseworker for the warming shelter and our rehousing program.
Welcome to all three of you. They act surprised that you could do that, Josh.
Well, thanks for having us this evening. I'm going to get started explaining Foundations for Living. For those of you that don't know us, we're a faith-based nonprofit organization here in Wapaka, but we not only service Wapaka, but the surrounding communities. And our goal is to empower people to reach their independence and self-sufficiency. When people come through our doors, they're really in an emergency situation, and we're like an emergency room. We can only help them with their immediate need, and then we help them to find referrals for whatever their needs may be. These are some of our key services. So again, when people come through our doors, they're in a crisis situation, and we try and meet their immediate needs. We can help them with financial assistance through the Salvation Army. We can provide them with vouchers for either rent or utilities. We can provide them with food that we have in our own pantry. We have a thrift store, so we can help them with clothing or household items, whatever they may need that we have for them. We do provide some classes and coaching, and we can help them look for jobs and provide some job training. NA and AA also are, use our building for their services. And we really try and help refer them for their long-term needs, because we're just an immediate crisis situation. So last year, even in the midst of a pandemic, you can see all of the different needs that we met. We had almost 460 people that walked through our door with crisis situations. In, yeah, in the middle of a pandemic. You can see the amount of phone calls, 1,380 phone calls that we received throughout last year. We give away a lot of hygiene products, gas cards, all these food cards, 40 families that we helped with food from our pantry. And with the Salvation Army, we gave financial assistance and almost $23,000.
And that's a lot.
And we have a very, very limited staff. So a lot of those, a lot of the assistance that goes on is done by volunteers. You want to just go back for me? I want you to look at the number of hours volunteers put in at Foundations for Living. So we have volunteers that help in the office. We have volunteers that help in the thrift store, and volunteers that help in the warming center. And then we have in-kind giving. So people give to us, and we can turn around and give it to others. And you can see the dollar value of food that we provided through the warming center, food that we gave to families that came in in need. Yes, this is an addition, too. And the dollar amount of clothing and household items that we give to people, and then also blankets and quilts that are given to us, and we can turn around and give them to other people. So these are just a few of the things that we can provide to individuals. I'm sure most of you are aware of us because of the warming center, and Wilma's going to speak to that, because that's a huge part of who we are and the services that we provide.
So we are excited, but also very humbled by the fact that that this year has been really hard. And I'll share some of that with you. We didn't want to just tell you the good things. We're going to tell you a little bit about everything that we did this year. And we want to thank you guys for being willing to work with us, because there is really a big need. We are an emergency room, basically, for health and human services. And because of that, we try to meet the immediate needs of people. And then sometimes, if we can, if we have the ability, we expand into other areas, which we're going to maybe get to share a little bit of some exciting news, because we are always seeing needs, we're always seeing things that we want to do. Our hearts are huge, but we have to keep limiting ourselves, saying, okay, our hearts are huge, but we really can't do everything. In fact, when, if you want to just, okay, first of all, I guess the big question I'm going to, before I go ahead on what happened this year, is everybody asks, but this is Wapaka. There's no homeless people in Wapaka. I hear that all the time. And it's true. We don't see people very often, at least, sitting like this, begging. So you think, oh, there's no homeless people. But our homelessness is what I call the hidden face of homelessness. There are many, many people we meet almost every day that are living in their cars, living in tents, they hide in the fields, or living on people's couches. And it's not a sleepover if you can't go home. So they are maybe going from people to people, anybody that will take them in, living on their couches, living in their backyards in tents, all kinds of stories we hear. And there are definitely a large number, maybe not huge percentages, but a large number of people that are homeless in our area. Last year, in January, to give you an idea, Foundations for Living had two employees that were being paid, myself, as full-time director, and Jan, who is our front office person, who is part-time. That was it. But we had over 50 volunteers in January. That's a lot of volunteers, and people that were really committed to helping. Now, the majority of them were over 65, or just like, you know, just recently retired and wanting to help, which are so thankful for, very quality people, people that that had a lot of talent. When 9/11 happened, everything changed. In one day, in one day, we were unprepared, but almost all of our volunteers were asked to stay home, because we said everyone that's over 65, shelter at home. We wanted to be, go by what the government regulations were at that time. Then, on top of that, our center was full. In fact, in 2020, we had over 50 people that came through our center. And then, let's see, yeah. So we, I started meeting with, I better go back for just a second and say, can you imagine, myself and Jan, and now, instead of 50 volunteers, we have just a couple? Luckily for me, or for the people that were in the center, we had a young man, Michael Hall, who was working at Neville, who had a big heart for people that were homeless. And he started coming. In fact, he slept almost every night at the center. And that's hard when you are in a room with a bunch of snoring guys. And so I should say, he tried to sleep almost every night at the center. During that time, he was the main night person. We had some people, a few volunteers that did fill in. And then I was the main day person. So in the next month and a half, we put so many hours in, it was incredible. We were exhausted. And when summer came, I talked to Erin and said, I don't know what I'm going to do. We don't have enough volunteers. I can't survive caring for people when I have to be there. I would be there from 6:00 in the morning to sometimes 9:00, 10:00 at night. And that was for seven days a week. And that's exhausting. It's really exhausting. So I went to Erin, and he was wonderful, and a number of other people from Rotary, we started brainstorming, thinking, what are we going to do with the next season? Because our seasons go from the 1st of November to the end of April. And we are saying, what are we going to do? How are we going to handle this? What are we going to do with people that come and are cold and hungry and don't know have any place to go? So we started meeting, we came brainstorming, we came up with the idea of possibly putting them at the Econo Lodge. So that's what we ended up doing. We moved to the Econo Lodge for the 2021 warming center season, in order to provide social distancing, to be able to do COVID testing, and to be able, not have to have overnight volunteers. So the community, if it wasn't for the community, we wouldn't have been able to do it. There was just no way possible. People rallied around, they provided food, healthy meals, through something called the Meal Train, that actually Jill set up online. And we had meals, almost wore meals for them almost every night. We had all kinds of food provided. We, if there wasn't a meal a certain night, people donated cards, takeout cards, gift cards, and they could go to the restaurants nearby. And then during that time, we cared for 42 people from that, from the November 1 to the end of April. And, and this is some interesting statistics, because everybody thinks they weren't from Wapaka. They're all coming in from other countries or whatever. 21 of the 42, so that's half, were from the city of Wapaka. 13 were from outside the city limits, but in Wapaka County. That's a huge number that were right nearby. So some of them maybe were from Scandinavia or Iola or something like that. But, but they were all from Wapaka County. Eight were from other areas. There were people that maybe were just traveling through, or possibly they had been in jail, in, at the county jail, and had been released. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. 11 were addicts. I heard, talked to somebody yesterday, and I mentioned something about this growing meth addiction. And they said, oh, we never hear anything about that. That's not in this area. They should come and spend some time at Foundations for Living. Now, the day goes by, we don't have meth addicts at our door. It's really sad, guys. So 11 were active addicts. Eight were actively mentally ill, severely mentally ill. And 16, this is the part that really is hard for us, and that we need some help with your discussion, and maybe with the county's discussion of what to do. Because 16 were directly released from jail, and we were expected to care for them. And because they were really not ready to be released, 13 were reincarcerated. Only three stayed out of jail. And we were kind of the interim jail. And I don't like it. And there's got to be a better answer, and I don't know what that is. So how we set it up is people could come in, and they could stay with, at the hotel for three days. But they had to, if they wanted to stay more than that, they had to become part of our program. And our program was quite rigid. It's all through volunteers. But they had mentors that met with them. They were able to work on things. Jill spent a lot of time with people, getting them all registered into the government programs, getting them to medical appointments, applying for jobs, getting their driver's license, finding housing, all of these things. We worked really, really hard to get, to help people move forward, to get them out of homelessness. Our goal is not to just keep them warm. Our goal is always to get them out of homelessness. Now, that said, that was because of this year. This year, we had to do it 24/7 because of COVID. In the past years, that wasn't the case. It was just an emergency warming center. And we're struggling with that, because we love helping people, but at the same time, we know our limits. And, and if we don't get more volunteers and help, we won't be able to do all the things that we'd love to be doing. Anyway, two of the people that came in are presently on, in long-term help. We always refer, 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 but not very many people accept the referrals. But we have one, one man that is actually in a mental health facility, a long-term mental health facility. He accepted that he needed that kind of help, and he is now in Minneapolis in a long-term mental health facility. And one young lady was willing to admit that she had a dual diagnosis, mental health and addiction, and she is now in a long-term mental health, dual diagnosis facility. And so we're excited about that. Their goal is not that they stay there forever, but that they get help. And I think it always takes longer than the 30 days to get them help. I don't see a lot of success in these 30 days, especially 30-day outpatient programs. But, good news, 21 found jobs. That was incredible. We were able to work with them, and 21 found jobs. And all the people that remained in our program, now, some of them started, they didn't like the rules, and they left, or whatever. But the ones that stayed in the program, all of them found housings, jobs and housing. So, that said, that's all the kind of good stuff. It was an awful, wonderful, terrible year. And the reason I say it was a wonderful, terrible year, is we tried to run the program, only doing two hours of registration a night. And then, as time went on, we thought, we can't do this. We tried to just use mentors, and they met sometimes with them, but not as regularly as we wanted them to. And, and so we ended up, we ended up hiring Jill as an outside consultant, and she came, and she spent time with them every day. And that made a big difference. But it was awful, because you're dealing with a lot of people just out of jail. 16 were just out of jail. And these are criminals with all kinds of criminal activity going on. And, and it was hard. Then, on top of that, okay, can we go to the next one? The whole concept of, of what we're responsible for. In prior years, we were just a warming shelter. Our only goal was keep them from freezing to death at night, and give them a good night, a good meal, and send them back out. It's probably not what, all they needed, but for us, that was what we could handle. This year, we tried to do a lot more, and it was hard. It was really hard. Hard because we fell in love with these guys, and they would get, doing really well, and then do another hit of meth, and be all whacked out and go back to jail again, or whatever the situation was. And it's, it's not easy. Also, we were working with people with severe mental health issues. We tried to get them diagnosed, tried to get them medicated. Some of them did okay. But oftentimes, they don't want to admit that they have any mental health issues. So that's not easy population to work with, for sure. And as I said before, 13 of the 16 that were, that came directly to us from the county jail, went directly back to the county jail. And that's sad. But we're at the point right now where we're trying to evaluate. We're trying, we realize that we can't do everything. Everybody has limits, and we would rather do things well than do a lot of things. So we know one thing for sure, we're going to try to continue to do the emergency housing. But there's always a million other things that we'd love to do, and we'd love to help this person. But unless somebody decides that they want to make the change, no matter how much you offer, no matter how much you give to them, it's not going to happen. You know, I wanted to tell, have you guys think about this little bit. If you got, were bleeding, or your child or whatever was bleeding, or, or having heart pains, or whatever, you'd rush them to the emergency room, right? And the emergency room would try to get the bleeding to stop, and maybe have to air vac them to another hospital, or maybe keep them in the hospital. But the emergency room wouldn't do everything. They would do the immediate lifesaving measures. And that's what we're coming to. We really feel like that's going to be our primary focus. And then, as we expand and are able to do more, we'll try to do more. We'd rather do a few things well than a lot of things poorly. So that's where we're at. We do want to remind you that we are emergency room. If you know people that need emergency services, human services, not medical services, we're, that's what we're here for. And that's what we love to do. And we want to help with that. But we can't do everything. And there are reasons why we, we say we can't take somebody. Usually, it's because we've given them a lot of chances. They aren't taking them. We've offered to take them to another facility. They won't go, just like an emergency room that can't keep saying, come, come, come. But you never, we'll do anything we ask you to do. So that's kind of where we're at. Do you have questions? Oh, and I'm going to introduce you to Jill here in just a second. That's another good news thing. I'll tell you after you, yeah, ask, answer these questions first.
Thank you, Wilma. Go ahead and introduce Jill.
Okay, this is Jill Amos Polifka. Yep. Hi. I am working on bringing the Salvation Army rehousing program into Wapaka. So I've been doing a lot of training and going up to Stevens Point, and today I did a shadowing. And I got to be part of a very important meeting that is so close to my heart, I can just scream right now, because it's just such an awesome, it's something that I went to at a state level. My heart is in foster care. I've adopted, I won't say how many, lots, the kids. My fear has always been, when they're 18, they're just cut off. We do independent living skills, but there's no, like, financial to help them get in housing and get on their own. And today, when I was part of that meeting today, the state has finally given $145 million for the state of Wisconsin to start transitional housing. And they asked if we wanted to be on board, and I was like, jumping for joy, because that is a dream, a dream that I've had, and been trying to fill that gap. It's a gap that hasn't been filled for many, many years. And it's concerning, because then these kids end up in jail, homeless. There's just a lot of mental health. They all come from traumatic backgrounds. So there's just a lot of stuff. And the guys that I'm working with in our home that we started here in Wapaka, two out of three came out of foster care. So that was like, oh, this even proves it more, you know? And they're 31 and 26. So I am just excited, because we can bring, well, we're...
well, we're filling out the grant. We can have from $1 million to $15 million come into Wapaka County to fill this gap in this program. But it's just the very beginning and I just want to jump to the end and have it done. But it's a good positive. So we also are bringing in the rehousing program, which we've started doing through Stevens Point and through the warming shelter. So yeah, as soon as I'm done with my training, we'll be up and going. And we'll have it right here in Wapaka where we don't have to reach out to our neighboring communities. So that's my good news.
As I mentioned, we only had myself and one part-time worker a year ago. And I have been able to do some grants. So we do have more people working with us now, which is great, too. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, Wilma and Bev and Jill, thank you for coming tonight and informing us of what's going on with you. I appreciate that. And people are getting the message. You need volunteers.
Yeah, for sure. Always.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, or staff, or council members that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please give your name and address for the record and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right, let's move on to department head reports then. And as always, we'll start to my left. Kathy, you want to go?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, council members. My report is in the packet and I believe it starts on page six. We did receive a dividend from our liability insurance carrier, the Lega Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Company, in the amount of $14,311, which is up from the prior year, which means they had a better year than 2019. So we're doing really good. This isn't a budgeted item, so it's over and above our revenue threshold. So go into fund balance or cover any shortages, shortages we have this year. Keeping up with the Department of Revenue and the American Recovery Act, Plan Act, they have requested us to file our request to be reimbursed. I filed it last week. And so we are just waiting for them to send us our share of the ARPA money. Auditors are working remotely on the 2020 audit. We should have some numbers for you at the next council meeting, draft ones. So otherwise, my staff continues to learn new things and keep up with everything that's changing in our world of finance. Otherwise, I don't have anything until later on in the agenda.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. As Kathy said, she's, if you noticed on the agenda, she's going to be talking about the TIFs and the TID districts later on in the meeting. So anybody have any questions or comments for Kathy? All right, let's go on over to the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So a few things are happening within the library. We are relaxing our capacity limits and our time limits. So that'll be a little bit different from us. We are asking our staff to remind people that the masks are optional for fully vaccinated individuals, but we are not enforcing that in any way. Our study room and conference rooms are single-use still for people in the conference room, but they can stay longer than the four hours they were originally limited to. Our computers now will be back up to our pre-pandemic four-hour use per person per day. A few months ago, I talked about being the job services place for people to come and get information about unemployment insurance, about looking for jobs. And we have become that job service area. And one of the things that we found is that the hotspots and the laptops that we're loaning are becoming those pieces people can take home with them and search for jobs, get new training for jobs. And another interesting piece of that is that these are people who are over 50. So many of our users of laptops and hotspots are over 50. Now, in my mind, I thought, well, it'd be younger people that wouldn't have access. But we're finding it's older people who don't have access to the internet. Our hotspot program was provided through a grant. So now I'm looking for additional funding for next year. I think we're still in a crisis mode and we're going to be looking for that. So I'm exploring those a little way, a little different ways. We're also providing information for households who are eligible for the emergency broadband benefit, which is an actual $50 towards internet service in your home by certain providers. So if anybody's looking for that, please stop in the library. We have information for you. At our, at our library board meeting tomorrow evening, I will be bringing forward a list of capital projects for the library board. It's a prioritized list, which I have shared with Erin Jensen and Justin Behrens. The first one is a project for the library lawn. And that's pretty exciting to think that we might have a new look along with our Main Street look. A gender-neutral bathroom, a meeting room storage, and a drive-through library materials pickup window. And all of those will be prioritized. My plan is to get estimates and bring that to the capital plan in August. We started our summer library program. Our goal is to read 10,000 books this year. We read over 5,000 last year. We're, we've got a good start. We have over 1,000 already in the last two weeks. So I think we're going to make it again. Our programs are in the parks. We're very grateful to our park and rec department for allowing us to use the shelters during the day. Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, you can find teen programs in some of our parks and children's and family programs in others. I encourage you to stop in or go to our website to find out about those. I had the opportunity to stop in today at Riverside Park to see all of the kids. There were about 30 people there enjoying activities, scavenger hunts, doing some crayon drawings, having some corn toss. So it was really great. And we're able to do it outside safely because many of our children have not been vaccinated. We are wearing masks in the lower level of our library because our young people haven't yet been vaccinated. So if you see that, that's the reason for that. We are planning an exhibit for September. We're really excited about that. We have an artist coming from the southwestern part of our country with some beautiful art based on South American travel. And our goal is to have in-person programming and open our meeting rooms up in September. So more as that we, as we go on towards that. Thank you.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions or comments for Peg? Go ahead, Colin.
Peg, when you mentioned the masks in the lower level.
Right.
Sue had mentioned that to me. I thought it was a great idea because like you just said, the kids aren't vaccinated. Are you at least maybe asking or putting a sign up or anything to ask adults as well? I understand that Sue and her staff are wearing masks, but are other adults and users of the library using them there as well?
It's a difficult thing to enforce. And there are strong feelings on that mask-wearing. We are, we are letting people know that that's the reason we're wearing masks, because our young people haven't been vaccinated. But we are not enforcing mask-wearing in the lower level.
Okay. And there's no sign or anything asking for?
Actually, it says masks optional in all departments on our sign.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's go over to public works. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've mentioned in the past, our small digester project, the wastewater plant, we got some unfavorable bids. So we shelved that project for a year. We had for next year, replacing a number of pumps for the plant. And what we're planning now is to just kind of do a switch. So accelerate the pump replacements and put off this project. So right now, the guys are getting some numbers together, looking to see what we need. And I'll be bringing that forward for approval in the future. But just wanted to give you a heads up to that. The other thing we're doing for that project is, you know, it's a tank that has a cover. What's inside is largely unknown because it's a confined space and it's pretty old. We're, we're going to remove the cover and get an inspection done on it soon. That cost is very minimal according to, or in proportion to the rest of the project. It'll give us valuable information that we'll be able to put back into the bids or for advertisement. And then we're hoping that with less questions, we will get better bid pricing when we do re-advertise. Our CMAR report, excuse me, was completed for 2020. And I'm going to be going over that later tonight. That is just our annual, basically grading for the wastewater department through the DNR. Lift stations, we have 12 of them total in the city. And what a lift station is, if you don't know, water goes downhill. And when you get to the lowest point, you got to push it back uphill. So pumps push it back uphill. These stations use quite a bit of energy. And we've been looking into how to reduce that usage there. For a couple of years, just been talking about it. And now we're actually implementing a few things or we're looking to. And our goal is to cut the total cost of our usage by 20% in the next couple of years. So it's something that Jesse is looking into, excited about. And I should be able to report more on within a few months. Main Street, we did open Fulton Street this morning. So that intersection work, I think it was stage one C, it was complete. That was, you know, we talked about in the past of targeting this week. We've gotten some phenomenal weather. At one point, I mentioned we were slipping behind the schedule. You know, since then, we're ahead of schedule now. Cross your fingers that the weather keeps holding out. We're still targeting early July for a switch over to stage two. I don't want to say too much, you know, without sticking my foot in my mouth. But that's what we're looking at. And as long as we keep getting sunny weather, the crews out there are making very good progress. And we're looking to switch over and do South Main, hopefully early to mid-July now. We striped a new parking lot downtown. So the old Midtown Motors was striped by Roger and the street guys. Add a few more stalls to kind of help with the downtown parking with our construction going on. So feel free to utilize that. Please note that on Saturdays, the farmer's market is there. So parking's not going to be available on Saturdays, but Monday through Friday and even Sunday, you can park there. The pickup truck and one-ton dumper that was approved by council not too long ago, we put our order in and we were told we got 30 weeks until they arrive. So that's, we're hoping, but doubtful it'll come even this year. But kind of interesting. It's just the nature of how things are right now. We had a number of leaks spring up on Fulton Street next to Main Street. You know, it happens. We were planning one of them. A couple of them just kind of happened. And but the guys dug their heels in and got services replaced and repaired very quickly. And I'd just like to note, and I will be putting out more of communication to the business owners and the people that live in downtown, that a lot of times when we do utility work, water quality can be affected. It might get cloudy. In such a case, please call the water department and we will help you through any problem, any time of the day. A couple announcements. Brogan Canzoria is three years on the crew. Time flies. And Jesse Landry, who we honored last time, has 15 years, but it's definitely worth noticing, saying again.
Thanks, Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments for Justin? All right, Andrew, thanks. Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We're pretty much going full bore right now. June is our busiest month. Just to update on a few numbers, so far for full registrations this year, we have 1,143 registrations. Just a couple notes to make. 2021 soccer, we're at 375 kids that signed up. 2019, so obviously I skipped last summer. 2019, we had 367. So we are above that. So things are definitely rolling. Swim Session One started on Monday in the chilly waters of Shadow Lake. And we had 177 kids take part in that. So things are looking pretty good. Numbers are right where they have been, if not higher, as you can see. We have 132 rentals of our shelters this summer with no issues of those at any point. We're two tournaments down of the four weekends that we have tournaments in June. So the first one was the first weekend in June, we had a boys 11 and 12U tournament. I believe we had 11 or 12 teams at that one. This last weekend, we had two different girls tournaments. They're one-day tournaments. And between the two, we had 22, I think I said earlier today, 22 teams there. And then this weekend upcoming, we have another boys tournament. And then the weekend after is our rec program tournament. And then baseball for rec will be done at that point. So very busy month. Staff has been doing a great job keeping up with all the demands. Couple administrative things. We did recently put out our bike and pedestrian plan survey for the community. So I encourage anybody to go and take a look at that and fill that out. You can find that on our Facebook page, City Will Pack a Facebook page. And then the two websites as well. Whether you bike or you walk or you do neither, it's good for us to get that information. It's very helpful in that bicycle and pedestrian plan as we move forward. So be sure to take a look at that and fill that out. Last weekend, in between being out at tournaments, we did have a quick dedication to the sign out at Lakeman Field. If you remember, two years ago, we put up a sign due to a generous donation in memory of Luis Dayton and then a few other donations from the Wapaka Foundry and Farmer State Bank. We held off on the dedication last summer, but we had a little ceremony last weekend. And if you saw in the paper, relatives and Dayton family members were the whole infield and pitcher and catcher and everything. And they batted and played three innings and won. So it was good. It's a good day. And there was a large crowd there to see that. So it was nice to do that. And you know, I'm just very thankful to the Dayton family for a great, you know, memory of Luis. And I think it's very fitting based on how much time she spent out there and how much she cared about this community. So as far as the splash pad, of course, that news is out there. Everyone's hopefully talking about it. Everything's been going very positively for that. We are still in a fundraising phase right now. So if anybody listening is interested in making a donation, please give me a call. But we're doing fairly well. We've secured a couple of our top levels. So if you remember, our top one was 100,000. Then there's a couple 50,000 ones. And we've actually secured a couple of those. And more information will come out at the appropriate time for those. And so things are being, you know, things are going positive. We're seeing donations coming from the community as well. And so we'll continue to push forward. We'll see how that grant goes. And I'll just keep you updated on that. Otherwise, anything going on in the senior center? It's still been going very smoothly with the different COVID changes that we made recently. They have opened up a few more things such as wood carving. So that group has come back. Couple card groups have come back. Some mahjong groups have come back. And it's just really good to see people socializing and talking down there as well. And that's about it.
All right. Andrew, thank you. Any questions or comments for Andrew? All right, let's go to the police department. Paul?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Smith and council for letting me sit in for Chief Hozell. So the Police and Fire Commission met in person on, last Tuesday on June 8. During that meeting, they approved the minutes from the previous month and also reviewed the expense report. They reviewed one of our recent updated policies with the Code of Ethics. Administrative Assistant Tiffany Stotzheim had finished her probationary period on June 1 of this year, and she's doing well. The Wapaka Police Department participated in Click It or Ticket, which is a statewide campaign. That was through May 26 through June 6. It's basically a nationwide campaign to spread the word about the importance of wearing seat belts. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, 89% of Wisconsin motorists do wear their seat belts. During the campaign, during the campaign, Wapaka Police Department had spent about 66 hours on traffic enforcement with over 100 citations being issued. 43 of those were for seat belts. Then there was also 51 warnings issued. There was a Special Olympics torch run that went through Wapaka on June 3. And the event was smaller this year. And the event was smaller this year due to COVID. In May, we had a busy month with calls. Some of the bigger calls we had was a fatal motorcycle accident where the operator had struck a pole. We had four fraud investigations that are currently being investigated. We had a search warrant that was executed and multiple charges are being forwarded to the district attorney's office on that. And also a burglary was solved with the assistance of working with other jurisdictions. And our department also received a thank you card from Sunny Day Childcare just for a meeting that we had over there with them, so.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Good job. Anybody have any questions or comments for Paul? All right, Sandy, it looks like Josh doesn't have a name tag anymore, so maybe he's moved on. So we'll just go to Sandy.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on pages 40 and 41. Our new voting machines are scheduled for pickup and training next week, Wednesday, the 23rd. Barb and I will attend the training and then in turn we'll train our two chief inspectors, Roy Lawellin and Linda Hagan. And then we'll be using those in the 2022 election starting in February. Also, the city's annual board of review was held on May 25th. We heard one objection from Times Square Joint Venture LLP, which is the former Kmart building. They had also requested a reduction in 2020, which we did do for them. And then they came back again this year for 21 and they requested it to be reduced down to 2,500,000, but the board denied this request. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. All right, ready, everybody? Here's Josh.
Moving as fast as the servers.
Everybody turn.
Can we get that modem somewhere?
I don't know where it was. Andrew, what did you do with it?
The name tag? Oh, that's well hidden, so those two don't mess with it.
I'd never touch it. I'd never.
Some projects I'm working on, I think it was Aaron that found it. City of Manasha puts out an annual physical calendar that gets mailed to their residents with a bunch of city information, dates, etc. And we're gonna replicate and copy that idea, so I'm in progress in putting together a draft of that right now. Once I got that draft done, the departments can go through it and suggest changes. And then in conjunction with that, we've launched a photo contest for area residents who can submit pictures. And once I have the deadline met next month, I'll share those with our staff and elected officials and everyone can vote on the pictures and we'll take the top 13 and include that in the calendar. Couple of the pictures that have come in so far, there's some really neat ones in there. So I think this will be an exciting communication piece for our residents, once we get it out this fall. My staff and I are working through the rate change with Willpacka Online and the website up to date, letters out to the customers. Shelley's gonna be putting a lot of effort to get billing up to date. Ralph's been working through the upgrades in the system, so that's coming along by July 1st. More or less have completed the AV upgrades in the library meeting room and the exhibit room. They're in much better shape than they were. A couple small items on back order and there'll be some fine tuning and adjusting to do once we're using those rooms and kind of see how everything works out. And then we'll be working through some processes soon on increasing security on our email and our Wi-Fi in our city buildings. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Josh. All right, let's go over to Aaron.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. As noted earlier, my monthly report was uploaded to Packet. Let's just cover some highlights in there real quick. Neighborhood planning efforts, we talked about this, the River North concept. Our development review team has been talking about that for the past couple of weeks, actually probably over a month at this point. Right now, just gonna be in the process of reaching out to some realtors, some large workforce, some large employers for some of their comments as we look to finalize that. Hopefully, we can get a final draft to you guys by July 20th for your review and feedback. Fulton Street progress, if you've driven down there lately, it is, it's looking a little different. We have, the Starbucks property is going up right now. Also, the old, it would be the old laundromat car wash is getting torn down. There is not a development plan for that just yet, but there was a fire, working with insurance, raising that building, clearing the site. So that will be more attractive for future development in that area. Shopco Optical is moving into the current, or the old Family Video space. And then Everyday Hometown is working on a grand opening. I spoke with Mr. Becker late last week and he's hoping for the next three to four weeks having more of a grand opening. Like many people struggling with some of that supply chain stuff and getting things in. So just working on that, wanting to make sure that it's, that it looks great when he starts. So it's looking good in there. The Community Economic Development staffing, as you guys know, we're out for a job. The Community and Economic Development Director position. You can see the places that we've posted that and are advertising that position this Friday. June 18th is when we are going to do our first review of applications. I can tell you it's been slow to this point, getting applications in, so we will see what a couple of days brings, but I will report on that. Conversation regarding an aquatics facility, you'll see this in the reports. We originally had, you know, we're working through a market study right now that there was donor money that's covering a $4,500 market study. Again, really, there are three planning phases to this conversation. And the market study is phase one of three. When we get done with the three phases, that's when we feel like we'll have all that information to decide, okay, do we move forward, do we not? And in the meantime, we are looking to take a little tour of the Southwood YMCA in Wisconsin Rapids. That was originally scheduled for this Thursday, but due to some unforeseen, out of anyone's control circumstances, a couple of members cannot make it, so we're gonna try to push that to either late June or shortly after the 4th of July. So we have some time as we work through these other phases. City facility tour, as you guys know, we will be canceling our regular business meeting on July 6th, but we will, Sandy, will be noticing it as we will have a quorum for the city facility tour. You'll see a schedule there. We, you know, when we started putting this on paper or on my whiteboard, to be exact, as you pencil it out, we just did not have enough time really to do it all justice. So what we're gonna do is do a public works night, just the wastewater treatment plant in itself. It takes 40 minutes minimum to really understand what's happening there on a surface level. And then, you know, everything else, City Hall, Library, Rec Center, Police Department are all within a walking distance of here. So we can cover that later in the year. Maybe we'll do them in one, maybe we'll do them and chunk them up in segments. But we felt like that was the best option. So we will be leaving, now this is the key. We will be leaving the city parking lot by the fire department and the PD with all the Main Street construction going on. That, the two buses, and when I say buses, the Willpacka taxi shuttles are what we're taking. They will be leaving that parking lot at 5:30, so I would ask that everyone gets here at 5:20 so we can kind of keep everything on schedule right from the get-go. And we're gonna go to Well 7 and 8, which is by Swan Park. We're gonna go to Mount Tom, the water tower, and then actually talk a little bit about the Willpacka Online equipment there at that time. We'll arrive at the sewage treatment plant at 6:10 and we've budgeted 50 minutes for that. And then we will arrive to the water department, that will take 20 minutes at maximum, maybe less. And then we'll get to the airport at about 7:20. We will eat at the airport. Beth is gonna set up some things in the Bruner hangar and we'll get something ordered. So just know that it'll be a little later dinner that night, so maybe have a snack before you come if you need to. And don't be nervous. You might see us, so you don't need a CDL to drive these Willpacka taxi shuttles. And I think I'm gonna be one of them. We gotta find one more, so I think I'll get you to where we need to go. And that's about all. I did make another note. Oh, I just wanted to say, we are getting a number of inquiries about Main Street. As things come together, people start to see it and have questions and maybe something that was covered in the last couple of years slipped people's minds and they're reaching out pretty frequently. But Justin and Josh have done just an excellent job at keeping everyone in the loop on what's going on on their weekly updates. Not only the videos, but the written ones. And out of all the comments we've received and questions, I would say a lot of compliments to those individuals in communication. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. Any comments, questions for Aaron? All right, let's go into new business. We have that ordinance, and this is from the public hearing earlier on. This is ordinance number 062021, and this is amending chapter 17 of the City of Willpacka zoning ordinance. And I'm just gonna ask Aaron just to go through that ordinance with us again. It's real short because of just the one change there, really. So you'll see it on whatever page, page 97 of your packet.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. Yes, it is on page 97 of the packet. You'll see really what we're talking about is 4B, no more than 70% of the street-facing building. Facade should be, shall be made of garage doors. This is a part of the site plan review process. So when an application for a house comes in, it's, really, you can look at it in three silos. The first silo is it goes through a zoning review or site plan review. That's where this falls into place. Next is stormwater management, which would be Justin and engineering. And then the next is building inspection. So this is a part of our site plan review process, making sure that zoning is taken care of. Again, we did not have this restriction or this language in our old ordinance really forever. So what it was, was the 50% of the street-facing building, only 50% could be made up of garage doors. We have a number of our homes in the community that exceed that. A specific set of homes that I can think of are duplexes or condos. Often it is, you know, the garage is in front and then the narrower living spaces on the sides. I, it's not in this packet, but I am gonna bring up a picture just so you guys can get a visual of what we're talking about and the application that brought this to our attention. So this is, this was in the Plan Commission packet, if you look up at the screen. This is a home that's being proposed specifically in the Foxfire area. Three-car garage, which is pretty standard in the city of Willpacka. On the lot, it meets setbacks on that lot. It's a nice home that, to be honest, is something that when we looked at it, we thought, well, this, I don't think the intent was to deny a home like this in the city of Willpacka. Had a conversation at Plan Commission and Plan Commission agreed, so that's why we're talking about it here. Mayor Smith did mention that there is some sense of urgency with this, and that sense of urgency is that, you know, this application and the building permit cannot be granted until this zoning goes through. If that's what council chooses to do or thinks is the right thing. The urgency comes along with, as everyone knows, building materials continue to rise somehow. And as we wait, you know, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, months, that project could get more expensive as we go along. So that is why, as a staff member, I would ask council to consider, if they think this is something that is right for our community, consider waiving the second reading, adopting this ordinance. Otherwise, I'd be open for any questions.
Anybody have any questions of the ordinance change? So we'd either be asking for, oh, I'm sorry, Demetri, go ahead.
Why have any restriction on percentage of garage versus anything else?
Good question. I'll show you some examples of maybe why communities do do this. So, and I don't know if these are the greatest examples, to be honest, but they'll give you a visual.
I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry. My question was, why even have an ordinance regulating percentage of facade that's garage versus not?
So I do believe a lot of planners, if you'll talk to a lot of planners, they'll say that if you have a lot of neighborhood like this that you see on the screen where it's all garage, that's not a great example. Now, this is a pretty nice-looking house, but you get the point. This is something you'd see on a lake lot or something like that. But a lot of planners might say, hey, that'll detract from the value of the rest of the neighborhood. We have talked to our assessors about that and they didn't necessarily think there was data that supported that. So I think it's a fair question. I think that just in general, there's a sense of, the more house rather than garage door, the more attractive that is from the street side, from a planner's standpoint. And I think that's the thought of regulating the percentage.
Yeah, I know at the city planning level, I think all of the city planning people felt that it was a good idea that you could see the front door from the, from the Main Street, whatever that footage was. So, I mean, that was just an opinion that came from the planning commission. We did discuss exactly what you asked at that level, but yeah.
Just, sorry. For the proposed house, what percentage is that over 50?
You're reading my mind, Paul. That's exactly what I was.
It's a scary thing.
It's approximately 63% of that house is garage.
All right, thank you.
Not that we zone these specific to certain parts in the community, but in Foxfire, they have a covenant that requires that they have a three-car garage and the lots are fairly small, so the lot, you know, the house would take up more of the lot. And again, we thought maybe more green space made more sense than seeing the whole front of the house too. Go ahead, Colin.
When it says building, does this apply to commercial buildings as well?
This is specifically for residential site plan review.
Okay, all good questions. So our options are here is this would just be the first reading and we wouldn't make a motion. But if somebody felt comfortable with waiving the first reading, we would entertain a motion to waive the first reading.
I would so move second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Keel, and that we waive the first reading of this ordinance 062021. This is an ordinance amending chapter 17 of the City of Willpacka zoning ordinance. Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye. Against, say no. Motion carried, and now then we would need a motion on the ordinance, whether you want to adopt that or not.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 06-21.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Keel and second by Hagan that we adopt ordinance number 062021. Again, any discussion? Since this is an ordinance, it requires a roll call vote.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Demetri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Let's go on then. We have a discussion on the removal of the Rotary Riverview Park bandstand. That's, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This memo tonight comes from a couple of months of internal discussions with staff, excuse me, city staff. We've been keeping an eye on this bandstand for a while. I believe the sign on it says it was built in 1998-99. It is in need of repairs and in major repairs would need to be done shortly. As you can see, if Aaron can scroll down, I believe he's in charge of some of the pictures attached to the memo, you can see some of the issues. So there's some water rot, siding rot. You can see those doors and I'll talk about why those doors look that way after a little bit. Painting, pieces falling off, keep going down, broken, rotting railings. Water damage, and there's actually more water damage on the inside. And then those doors, which I'll talk about a little bit, why they look And then those doors, which I'll talk about a little bit, why they look like that when I get to the vandalism aspect of the bandstand. So this memo just kind of goes through some of the reasons staff believes we should consider removing the bandstand from Rotary Riverview Park. During the review, the Opaque Riverfront Master Plan, which unfortunately is pretty small there, I think Aaron's going to try to make it a little bit bigger from for you. City staff noticed that the bandstand is not a part of the long term goals of the park. If he scrolls down to the second or third page, keep going. As you can see there up by the number five, if he can get a little bit closer, the bandstand is not there in the long term goals, as I had said. So removal of the bandstand does create an opportunity to expand that green space and open the possibility of expanding the trail. As you can see, number one there, expanding the trail to what is considered the challenge trail across the road. That is a goal of that Riverview or Riverfront Plan, and I think that's a great goal to have. I think that would really help encourage people from that side of the community to come downtown, to, you know, visit our local businesses and to enjoy the park as we see it in the future. Other issues that we have talked about in the memo would be the continued vandalism issues that we have there, including before my time of people getting underneath and not necessarily living there, but being underneath there for long periods of times, getting into the back bandstand. If you remember those, the picture of the board covering up the doorways, those used to be doors, but they did everything possible to get in there as often as they could. And draw obscene pictures, write obscene things, damage light fires. Paul may have some stories of things that they've done then in there as well. They also cut a hole in the front floor stage area and got underneath there and were underneath there for a while as well. So fortunately, we've had a lot of, to say the least, a lot of vandalism issues down there. Getting into the usage of the Riverview Park bandstand, it's been very low since we implemented ActiveNet. So the first records we have on ActiveNet would be 2016. It does get used by some groups outside of this, but it has been rented six times since 2016 for total revenue of just over $1,000. Half of those coming from one rental from a church in the summer, which was the most usage that I can remember. And I think that was in about 2018. Other than that, as I said, sporadically used for large community events, though it has not been used in the past couple of years. And I know COVID has something to do with that, but even without COVID, it has not been in the plans of some of those larger community events. I did meet with both our park superintendent and asked him to kind of take a look at what it would take to refurbish that up to, you know, quality, our standards in our parks, making it look nice and usable. With the current price of lumber and having to replace all that rot and broken, it was between $20,000 and $25,000. So you can see a high cost compared to the revenue that that bandstand is bringing in as far as rentals are concerned. Did receive a quote from Falk's Brothers Construction, just to give you an idea of what it would take to razz that bandstand. Includes loading, hauling and disposing of all debris. Also would include excavation of the concrete pad and footings. The quote came in at between $4,500 and $5,500. There is one extra cost between 500 and 1,000 for asbestos testing, which is required by the DNR. I asked, you know, since it was built in 98, 99, is that something we absolutely have to do? And everyone I talked to made it seem like the DNR would not budge on that. So that would come out of operational money, the rest, after talking with Kathy, it would come out of capital projects fund using residual bond proceeds from prior year's project without really missing a beat there. We would take care of the tests, as I said. I met with both our park superintendent and IT director because we do have electricity in there. We have most of our cameras on that area because of the vandalism that's in the parks. So our internet is in there. Both were confident that we could get those things taken care of at minimal cost, reduce the amount of cameras that we have down there and just move the internet service and shut down the electrical equipment or the electricity that goes there. So on Thursday, June 3, this was discussed and brought up at Park Board. And it was voted to approve taking this topic to common council for further discussion and possible approval. So with all the information collected, it would be staff's recommendation to remove the bandstand from Rotary Riverview Park at this time. So tonight I'm just requesting that the common council approve removal of Rotary Riverview Park Bandstand.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. That was very good. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? As Andrew said, they, oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a question, just briefly. How did, who was behind getting that shelter or that bandstand built? Or was it a park group or how did that happen?
Well, actually, I think Paul Mayo could probably explain it the best.
Okay. I'm just curious.
I was still in high school for time he was.
Decades ago in Main Street, Opaque, or the Main Street program was in Opaque. That was part of that effort. It was a fundraising situation where the Main Street program raised a lot of funds for Main Street and also for the for the bandstand. I and Terry Martin and Donnie Schrader and others built that stage. And it primarily for an event called Riverfest. I think nine or 10 in a row were held in the park. They raised more money for the Main Street program when it was active. And it was quite a nice event in the summer. But I agree, since since then, or probably in the last 10 or 15 years, that stage has gotten very little use and a lot of vandalism and probably should come down.
Right. Thank you.
The area that's rotten and stuff, that's the part I helped build. Go ahead, Colin.
Of course, I'm new to the council and I'm not familiar in detail about the things that are proposed being happened there. But are any of the projects that, it seems like the main problem you're you're running into is the vandalism. And my question is if the things that the city is going to do in the future would lower, in your mind or anyone else's mind, the amount of vandalism that would happen to that building. So in the meantime, just leaving it as it is and waiting until the rest of the project might be completed around it would be a way to maintain your, what you built, but avoid the. If it's going to continue to be a problem, then then I don't see the point of keeping it there. But if what we're doing is going to change the problem, namely the vandalism, maybe it's worthwhile to consider keeping it.
Sure.
I'd like your, yeah, if you have.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of questions in there. So the the first one, I think, you know, say we removed it and we did the things that are in the plan. Those types of things don't see the same type of vandalism as something such as a bandstand. If we left it and did those things, it would maybe lessen it in the fact that hopefully more people are down there and using that. But unfortunately, a lot of vandalism is happening at times that people aren't going to be down there, even with the trail. So, you know, that is a big part of it, but it is just part of, you know, the request to move it. And I think if we left it and worked towards those other things, the vandalism will continue and it's not going to get in any better shape without putting a lot of money into it. So to me, in my opinion, it just, it doesn't, you know, the cost is too great to get it to back to where it needs to be to be used. And then we need to find usage for it as well.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
To that point of of usage, in just briefly looking into things that are going on in the summer, it seems like anybody that has a band is going somewhere else and using some other park service. So there really isn't any demand to use it at all either, which was your point. But I, like today, I was looking at some arts council and they're doing all their concerts up at South Park. So it's, your point's really valid.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll make a motion that we remove the Rotary Riverview Park Bandstand.
I would second that.
Motion by Olson, second by Fair, that the council approve the removal of the Rotary Rotary Riverview Park Bandstand. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against say no. Motion carried. All right, next up, we have resolution 1491. This is Compliance Maintenance Annual Report called C Mar 2020. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. So memo is on 109 of the packet, followed by the actual resolution on 110. And beyond that is the actual C Mar report. What the C Mar report is, is just an annual evaluation that the wastewater department facility has to undertake. It's a self evaluation of their work, their efficiency and their treatment down there at the plant. It has to come forth to a, the utilities governing board and pass a resolution saying either there is things that need to be addressed or no action required. I threw a table on the memo showing over the last 16, 17 years, our scores down there. You know, the the guys that have worked down there mentioned Jesse a couple of times. He's worked here for 15 years. He's been a part of these scores. The other three guys have all been here within the last five, six years. But learning from past operators or past superintendent Jeff Dyer, they keep going with a high level of treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. 4.0 score, grading point score, and as you can see, most of them hit that 4.0. The report, since council has to review it, I'll go through it very quickly. The very first page, 111, is the majority of what it looks like. Tables with a lot of values on them, showing how the plant operates mathematically and with treatment. At the bottom of that page, Aaron, if you could please scroll down 2.2, that table 2.2. This one here is for our daily flow and BOD. If it exceeds our design standards, you'll get a point. That's in the two right columns. It's like golf. You don't want to get points. So at the bottom for that table, we got zero points. You scroll through the rest of the the report, you'll see that over and over again, no exceedances and zero points. Another page I'd like to point out is on page 112. We receive septic tanks, holding tank and grease trap waste from the rural community and within the city here. We charge for that, and the reason I want to point that out is because there's a lot of unknowns and our treatment needs to be top notch in order to take that waste, treat it and discharge it without breaking permit. So it's a revenue, but then it's also a nod again to how well our treatment plant works. Finally, on page 126 and 127, shows our financials for the utility. Our utility is doing very well. We are coming in on the black every year. So again, the guys are doing a fantastic job. Kathy is definitely supporting us with her knowledge. Near the bottom of 126, we added to the utility $231,000 just in 2020, where our balance now is just over a million. The next page near the top, DNR further formula says that we should have 1.2 million. We're very close to hitting that and that's very exciting because once we hit that threshold, that means we're financially stable. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, that we'll start borrowing less and funding projects through our own funds, which again should be more financial stability in the future.
Yes, and one of the funding sources is actually from the Chain of Lakes Sanitary District is helping to fund this this program. So we do get some assistance for maintaining a reserve for a replacement of the distribution system.
And I did, I did say something wrong. We're, our fund should be up to 1.8 million, not 1.2. So we are at 1.2 after last year and we need to get up to 1.8. So we are tracking that way. Finally, the final page of the report, which is 137, 136, 137, just gives the overall score, 4.0 GPA. So the guys are doing a fantastic job down there. I can't say enough about them. I'll stop and turn it over to you guys. And I need from you tonight is approval of resolution, what was that number, 1491, please.
Anybody have any questions? Why do you think he talked about golfing?
Because you enjoy it so much.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? Anybody like to make a motion? I thought it was a crazy joke.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution 1491 C Mar.
And I'll second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve of resolution 1491 2021. This is a Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Any further discussion? If not, it's again a resolution. So Sandy will call it all.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Justin. And next up, you have moving on with our Public Works facility. It looks like you guys have found somebody to do a design firm for us.
We have, Mayor. Thank you. So again, I have another memo starting on 138 going on to 140. I've invited Norman Barrientos of Barrientos Design and Consulting. He's right behind me setting up his computer and I've asked him to do a short presentation. I'm going to kind of lead up to where we've gotten so far and kind of go through this memo briefly. And it's been a lot, starting with 1999, the city did a facility wide or citywide facility needs study, identified a number of needs that the city needed to undertake. There was identified for Park and Rec, PD, and then Public Works. Park and Rec was the current rec center and then also PD was the current police department. And now we moved on to facilitating for Public Works. John Edelbeck, the previous director, did a lot of work with moving this along too. So it's been in the works for a long time. In 2013, he did a condition study and then a space needs study, which basically outlines what we need for space, both for people and for equipment and materials. We then moved on and looked at the old county highway garage since they moved out of their old space, built a new property or building, excuse me. And that did not prove to be a good fit for us. So then we moved on and purchased what is known as the Haber Corn Field Site. That was sitting on the market for about two years, owned by the school district, and we bought it back from them. We liked that site because it is centrally located in the city. Lakeman Field, owned by the city, the water garage to the right, owned by the city. So we just acquired all that property together, thought we could make it a very efficient space. We did a survey where we combined Haber Corn Field and the water department, which you can see is a gray building on that, on the aerial there, and then separated Lakeman Field, but it is all just one city property. We built a new salt shed just a year ago. So we previously got our salt from Opaque County Highway Department. When they moved out of town, so did our salt. And that added, we timed it, it added close to 40 minutes just for one truck to go get a load of salt. We use roughly 400 to 500 tons of salt every year. That's a lot of trucks. So we built this salt shed knowing or feeling that we would be building our future facility there. there, and it's there right now. Based on the information from the past of the space needs study, we developed our budget. So we're planning 6.5 million for a new facility in 2023, with about $250,000 for this year, and then $375,000 for next year. With that funding for, basically for designing, which is what we're talking about, or what Norman is here for right now, preparing the site and then some construction services. We're looking at building a roughly 40,000 square foot building. Now that generic square there is pretty close, and we anticipate that the building, parking lot, driveway, other things for Public Works will be just kind of in that square. The individuals to be housed in this building, of course, our street department, water department, not wastewater, they will stay at the treatment plant. And we are looking at if Park and Rec would be joining us as well or not, but that will be determined within the next year. So we have to get this building built and up. So we created a request for proposals, sent that out this last winter. We received five total proposals. There's a table on 139 that shows the five that did respond to the proposal request in alphabetical order. It shows you the overall cost, total hours that were submitted for the effort, and then a simple dollar per hour value. And then we have two scores there, so a group score and then a finalist score. So we put a group together to review all these proposals, which included myself, other person, Porczaski and Farah, Roger Hanson, Russ Montgomery, Mark Nolenberg, Eric Hints, and then of course, Aaron Jensen. So the first group score, the higher, the better. And we base that on six categories: qualifications, personnel, services, cost, proposal quality, and then similar projects. I won't get into the details, but I provided the group how to go through, review, or how to evaluate and score. Within each one of those categories, there was a description, so what we were looking for in the scoring. The group met in March. We combined all of our scores, and that's how we got that group score. And we talked about the proposals. We eliminated two, which were the two highest in cost. It just seemed like they, well, there was just kind of a grouping. We had three that were fairly close in the $300,000 range, and then we had two that were well beyond it. So that made an easy decision to eliminate those two and then interview the remaining three, which were Barrientos, Greys, Architectural, and then S E H. We interviewed those three firms at the end of March. Each interview was about 45 minutes long. We had roughly 20, 25 questions prepared for them, and we got, you know, vetted out a lot of information at that time. Everybody from the group, you know, took their notes, and then we, well, reviewed them, came back together, and what we did for the finalist score is we just said, well, 1, 2, and 3, and throw it, we basically just pulled it from, you know, right away. So the finalist score is, again, like a golf score, the lower, the better. And you can see there, there was one that was clearly, we threw out pretty much right away, which was Greys, and I need to touch on that because they were the lowest score. However, we identified through the interview process and reviewing the proposals that it seemed like there was a number of tasks that were not included in their effort. The total number of hours is under 2,000, while everyone else is well over, or the next one is close to 3,000 or more. So we had kind of an uneasy feeling that something would be missed. This is a large project that requires a lot of attention and a lot of detail, and we felt we were not going to get that with, with Greys. A few other things that came up, and we can go in that into detail if you'd like, but I'll just keep moving on. So we are left with the remaining two, which was Barrientos and S E H. Myself, Roger, Jake, our mechanic, and Russ visited a couple of facilities without them knowing and talked one-on-one with those municipalities that these firms did their design and really got into the weeds. And frankly, it made the decision probably even more difficult because they, the municipalities spoke very highly of these design firms through the, through calling them and then just through the visits. So basically, what it came down to is just reviewing all the data, looking at these firms that we were finished with, and Barrientos, we felt, took a slight edge. They are slightly lower in cost. They specialize in this type of project, and their cost per hour is really low, which is good, and we attribute it to just a low overhead. They're a smaller firm, so felt that we're going to have more people or more hours of professionals looking at this project and coming up with something that we want. And then, of course, just the sheer fact of the score, the finalist score, they were the best. The group score, they were in the middle of the pack, but all things considered, felt they were the best fit for us. So what this effort is, is the planning and design of this facility, the building, the parking lot, the stormwater on Haber Corn. They'll be looking at some sustainable options, but not full-fledged design. If, and when they are reviewing this, if it comes up with something that has a good payoff, that'll be a return to the council and provide that data and say, we want to do something more, whether it's solar design or something else. At this point, it does not make sense to put that effort into it. Just giving you a heads up that that could be in the future. There will be several presentations that Norman will make. One is certainly to plan commission, one is the council, and then one for Shirley to the public. So letting all the various levels of the community get a crack at seeing what we're up to and what we are planning. Cost estimates, that's very important. We got to keep track of when this is being under design. We're staying within budget. And then finally, creating and advertising the bid documents and analyzing the bids, along with some assistance during construction. I'll hit on a couple more things and then turn it over to Norman. Soil borings were not included in this contract. We will hire that out separately. And as you can see, I threw in there about $7,500 to get that done. We will need that geotechnical information before we put up a large building. Mentioned the sustainable design. If something seems to have a good enough payback, will fit our community, then we will dive into it further. The demolition of existing facilities, we have a number of buildings, which Public Works is spread out on. The billings that are the satellite billings, I'm going to be taking care of and getting that demoed, much like the bandstand, it's going to be the same, a similar process. That's not included in what we're talking about tonight, but is, it has been budgeted for. Road and utility improvements, Michigan Street and Harding Street will need a little bit of facelift, along with a little bit of improvements to our utilities under Harding Street. That's in the future, not this year, but in the next couple of years, to prepare and to support our building. And then finally, additional landscaping. We will have landscaping around the building, but we are planning a little bit more on the perimeter to try and not bother our neighbors so much over there. So I'm going to turn it over to Norman, who's got a little presentation for all of you, and then we'll open it up to questions and comments, discussion. Aaron, can you switch it to the podium, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and I'm happy I made it. It was a bit of a process, but we glad we persisted here and enjoyed getting to know your group. And actually, the whole process helped us understand your priorities, your values, and the importance of this project, too. So we appreciate your interest. I gather you're very invested in this whole process. It will be a lengthy process, and we're here to help guide you and educate you on that process and give you enough information so you can make proper decisions. We, we design garages throughout Wisconsin. It is our specialty, but 90% of our buildings are garages. So we're doing garages every, every year, we're putting out a garage or two, and we're planning multiple garages in a single year. I also am very active in APWA, both in the state chapter and nationally, and I give seminars on the design of garages around the country. So we're very excited about this, and I think there is a wonderful opportunity here to create for your village, a garage that is operationally efficient, supportive of your operational flow ergonomically and healthy for your staff and attractive to retain them, have better control over your assets and longevity, and also be a high-performing building and a sustainable one. And also, we're looking to build off for the future. We see this as a 70-year timeframe horizon, and we also want to bring forward a lot of upcoming technologies that's coming online in the industry and integrate that into your building as well. So, and obviously, doing this at a cost that's reasonable. Most of our projects are for cities or counties, so we understand the, the desire to get a functional, practical building that's going to last a long time, but we don't want to build a Taj Mahal. We don't want to overdo it, but there's a fine line with public buildings that I've, I've balanced, and we'll be going through all that and educating you on all your choices that you'll have. I have up there some projects. The top one is for Polk County in Balsam Lake, and then Jefferson County, Calumet County, and that's Chilton, New Berlin, and then Sun Prairie and Door County. There's one of the project with the TP, that's in Kachina. The other one is Manitowoc, and then finally, that's a metal building in Fond du Lac. And there's other projects, those are just ones that I put up there. So we've done larger ones and more of what we call satellite ones. A lot of them have been precast, but as I said, we've done steel-paneled ones or masonry block ones. So we'll go through all of those options with you. Oh, one other thing, Howard Engineering is going to be our, our only engineer. They're going to be doing our mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and civil and structural engineering on this. And some of you met the principal from that, so you'll be very engaged on this. As Justin said, the overall program is about a 40,000 square foot building, and it will have these different programs, the groups of streets, water, facilities administration are involved in this. We're going to be primarily housing, equipment for your fleet, construction, bulk storage items. There's also a lot of yard activities that goes into the facility, salt, sand, stockpiling, culverts, your construction equipment, or your construction material, and then the fueling station as well. The repair garage will be a very intense equipment designed area, and we'll be spend a lot of time on how you want to lay that out, what kind of equipment. It's going to be the most costly per square foot area, but it has the most impact on your operational efficiency. Then parts and bulk storage. There's a lot of assets that are maintained at the garage. They're worth millions of dollars. Our job here is to protect those assets and not only longevity, but from theft even, or just misappropriation of where they are, and also make them, put them in a logical place for the staff to get to them and use them in the proper sequence. And then we'll have the crew quarters and trainings, the lunchroom locker rooms, and then we'll have various offices for engineering, GIS, plotters, and public meeting area. Just a few visuals on other garages that we designed, so you can see the, the general character of these buildings, the repair garages I mentioned, is going to have area for the trucks to come in and be worked on. There's going to be lots of different equipment pieces that go with this, from lifts, bulk fluid reels, welders, tailpipe exhaust, a lot of water and air reels. So there's a lot to integrate in these. They're a lot like a hospital suite. We're going to conduct surgery on, on the vehicle and get in there and get it out safely and in short order. The parking garage, obviously, is going to be a big, large footprint for your building. Part storage, that's showing a desk for the parts clerk or mechanics, receives the parts from UPS and other delivery, and then sort them, inventory them, and then behind them is their repair garage. The crew quarters, obviously, we're going to look for something that's durable for people who are in boots, who are going in and out of the field, but we need to be supportive for launching, assembling, talking, having safety training, or maybe there's an HR meeting going on for, for all of them. And then the yard facilities, those will be integrated. They'll be a significant part of this project is locating those and the cost as well in deciding what we want in there. And finally, a truck wash, that's going to be great to have here. Everybody loves a truck wash, make washing the trucks happen quicker, makes it actually happen. Sometimes they don't do it if it's, they don't have nice facilities to wash them, and it'll increase the longevity of your fleet. So Justin already went over a bit of the, the site that we're working on at Haber Corn, and how we, we generally do see that, that blue square as a good location. I've, I've gone through the site and think that'd be a good starting point for laying that out. Briefly, I have visuals from a project that we're almost finished designing. It's a city of Pawaki. Their garage is actually a 49,000, but it's in that same range, not that we're going to lift this design here, but I want to show you what we're going to be doing next is we're going to be developing a parking garage layout, where we're going to inventory your fleet. We're going to identify every piece of equipment that's going to be parked and tag it. It'll show up on our plans. We'll park it in a stall that's the right size and group them where they need to be in the garage even, and then provide, look at where, how we're going to provide all the air and water and tools, emergency generators that are going to go into that large truck parking area. And then you're seeing in the lower right, the truck wash, repair bays, various shop areas in light blue for welding fabrication, bulk fluid. And then in the, that golden, or the tan area is offices, locker room, lunchroom. So again, this is just a sample one, but we're going to be walking you through, and every, every client I work with, we go through every floor, every room, every piece of furniture, and the layout is going to be run through very carefully with you, so it works with your staff operations and your fleet. Again, this is Pawaki in an early design. Actually, the design has changed since I've shown this, but as an example, we'll start developing architectural blocking diagrams to show you the, the size of this garage. The repair garage will be tall, so will the parking garage relatively tall. Obviously, the offices will be shorter, but it'll have a big urban aesthetic impact in the neighborhood when it's there. It'll stand out. So you'll, I'll get you to start thinking about materials and impact on this, and also functionality, durable quality of materials that we're going to be using on here, and then looking at the site and the flow, how the trucks are going to flow around and their different activities from when they fuel, salt, trailer up, go to the stockpile area, or when vendors come, or when the public is coming. So how we're going to separate all the traffic will be very visible. And we do all our work in a 3D modeling program. It's a BIM program, so we'll, we'll be cutting a lot of 3D models for you on this. Now, our scope of work is detailed in my letter agreement, but briefly, we're going to provide all architectural engineering services, so that will be architecture and tiered design, structure, site, civil engineering, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and landscape, architecture. We are going to sub-contract out, actually not consult, we're going to retain for you and reimburse, get reimbursed that for the survey and geotechnical on that and the asbestos testing of the building that will be demolished on site. So we're also, we're going to do our work in a series of standard architectural series, schematic design, design development, and construction documents, which are the working drawings and the bidding documents, and then assist you. Well, we'll conduct the bidding and then oversee the construction on this. So we'll be on this project all the way through. We'll get to know each other very well, and until you're actually moving the trucks in and hauling all your furniture over into the new facility. I did put in there sustainability. As Justin said, we will assess the full range of sustainable or green opportunities. Justin said, we will assess the full range of sustainable or green opportunities. I am US GBC accredited, uh, the US Green Building Council. So I understand the lead process. I know we're not going for lead, but I do think the fundamentals and principles of our lead are very good and essential. And we're going to look at opportunities to just bake it into design and, uh, use those principles. Obviously, the, the technologies that require more investment, more technology or maintenance, or maybe you can get funding, rebates on, we're going to identify for you and do a payback, a return, uh, on investment analysis for you. So you can look at the investment and if you decide so, then we'll, uh, move ahead with the design on those. We do have a schedule that is, um, is going to allow you plenty of time to participate in the process to review. We definitely believe in a facilitating approach. We're here to guide you and your, it's your project, you're the client, it's your money, it's for the community. So we're here to listen and then provide you advice on what's the best way to go. So our schedule will have, uh, begin off with schematic design, as I can pinch in here a bit, being a four month period, which will lay out the building and size it and start picking out the general, uh, materials, do the site layout and start looking at the permitting for this too, get the survey and geo tech all done. So that's four months. And then design development will be where we really zoom in on the equipment and the finishes and fixtures, uh, the sizes of things, uh, what kind of salt shed, what kind of fuel station. So we'll dig deeper into that, start getting specifications developed in that. So that's five months. Um, prior to the end of design development, we'll also have, be ready for plant commission, architectural reviews of the building and more advanced cost estimates. And then finally, the construction documents, obviously, those are the working drawings, specs, uh, everything that we'll, we'll put out for bidding, uh, will come out of that. And then as well as our final permitting, plan review, submitted documents will come out of that. So, um, we view that will be completed with design in around September, November of 2022. And I understand there's, you're not going to start construction till 2023. That's, so we stretched out our schedule a bit there. And that's really the overall. I was told to keep it to five minutes. And again, you'll be hearing more from me. I have a lot more detail to share with you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Justin, you have more?
I'm just looking for that action. If you want me to go through that, I could.
What you're requesting?
Yes. So, of course, looking to go into contract with Beriantos Architectural Group. Um, the total not to exceed 323,125 right now. And since we have this spread out over two years, I threw in there about half for this year. So 160,000, 125, um, which comes out of the 2020 GO bonds and then the other approximate half at 163, which would come out of the 2020 general GO bonds. And specifics on what that means, please ask Kathy.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so Kathy, part of this complex is obviously going to be our enterprise fund too. So when we talk about funding this, is, is there a percentage that's going to go towards the water bills?
We will have, we will have some from the water utility, uh, paying towards the debt. Um, but, uh, because, um, it'll be more of a lease agreement with the water utility because the asset will be paid for by the, um, with the GO bonds. So I'm looking at more of a lease agreement with the utility, um, to cover the cost of, of that instead of saying that percentage wise, the building is water utility and it's depreciable by the water utility. I just don't, I'm trying to make it really simple.
Well, so you're also thinking with the GO bonds, we're going to get a better interest rate?
Yes, it won't be a revenue bound. And it is going to be broken up over, um, two years. We haven't, uh, we did borrow, uh, last year to cover 250,000 of the design and engineering costs, uh, in last year's bond. And we're going to look at, at the remainder again, uh, in 2022 for next year's bonding. So we're looking at, um, spreading it over a couple of years. So.
Right. And so far, we've approved the 2020 GO bonds. The council has approved the borrowing for that, but we have not approved the borrowing for the 2022 GO bonds?
No. So what this is going to be is, is a reimbursement. So once, um, you approve the contract, it would be reimbursed, the city would be reimbursed by the proceeds of the debt issued in 2022. So I keep track of anything that you've done prior so that it's included in the debt, um, in 2022. But as far as cash flow, we'll be fine with, um, the additional 163,000 that we would be advancing before the bonds would.
So that would come out of our reserve and then go back into it? Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Uh, so I know this is a big step for us, obviously, and, and, uh, I, I thank those of you, and I, I know this group is still together as you go through the whole process, but they put in many hours and appreciate that, especially council members, Aaron Pritchard, uh, helping in this matter. So at, at this time, I think, uh, what Justin's asking for is, is our approval to move forward with, uh, hiring Beriantos Architectural Group.
I move to approve hiring of Berantos Design and Consulting for the, uh, architectural design and engineering work, um, not to exceed 323,125.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we got a motion by Martin, second by Hagan, that we approve, uh, entering into the agreement with Beriantos Architectural for an amount not to exceed 323,125. Any further discussion? Sandy, a color roll?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchard?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes and motion carried.
Thank you.
Justin, thank you. Uh, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's go move on with the agenda. Uh, we have some appointments to make, so I'll turn it over to, uh, council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor appoints city administrator, Aaron Jensen, and alderman Colin Dykstra to the Room Tax Committee. After hearing the mayor's, mayor's appointment, I need a motion and a second to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, uh, second by Chestnut to approve the mayor's appointment of city administrator, Aaron Jensen, and alderman Colin Dykstra to the Room Tax, Room Tax Zone Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate that. Uh, let's move on then. We have, uh, license report 1545, which you can find on page 185. Again, we would need motion to approve that license report. Some moved?
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by, uh, Chestnut that we approve license report number 1545. This is the operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, say no. Motion carried. Let's go to our, uh, issues, project discussion. And this is no action required, but, uh, we're giving Kathy actually the opportunity to, uh, to, uh, present this obviously to the council because she needs to also present this to the joint review board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Joint Review Board next Tuesday. So Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the, um, presentation that I will be giving to the other taxing jurisdictions on the status of the TIF districts. Um, it's required by the state, um, to, uh, bring our other taxing jurisdictions up to date on the status. So I'm going to give you the good news first. Um, I haven't changed the presentation, the presentation much, other than, um, I've used the same analysis that Baird did in June of 19 because nothing's changed on those schedules. We, we still have six outstanding TIDs. Um, and it kind of goes over the basic of TIDs and a little bit of what each one of those, um, TIDs were created for and where they are. Uh, again, our map of our TIF districts show, uh, the six that we have within the city. Uh, the brown is TIF 8, the red is TIF 3, little purple box next to there is TIF 9. Um, the blue is TIF 4 and the pink is TIF 6. So we're looking, uh, across the city as far as the TIFs are. Um, the next schedule is one that I really want to focus on in that this is the outstanding TIF debt for the city. And as you can see, it goes away in 2025. Last year before, we went and did a refinancing of TIF 8's debt, uh, because of the market. This was going out to third, 2032. So we have cut off almost eight years worth of debt and we saved over a half a million dollars in interest, uh, being paid by being able to do that refinancing at the rate it, we came in at. Um, well, again, the next, uh, schedule is, uh, just a overview of what TIF 3 is. It is the business park, industrial park. Uh, it is pretty much to the point where it still has debt, uh, uh, issues out there. There's a couple of coupons still left on the debt. However, it is past its expenditure period. We can't get into any more, um, development agreements, do any capital projects in this. It's pretty much just there to pay off its existing debt and then close. Uh, the value on this TID as of last year, the increment was 17.3 million, uh, which is 20.5% of our incremental value across the city. Uh, we paid, uh, last year, a $75,000 advance that they received for the water and sewer utilities. Um, so we've paid off any internal debt. Uh, we are looking at, uh, also because of the, um, increment in TIF 3, going to be recommending during the budget process to have, uh, prepaying any outstanding debt this fall. Uh, we will have a savings of about 15,000. We'll be looking at escrow and any open development agreements affected, um, because we are going to be closing, recommending closing this TID this year, which would give us one more increment in 2022 and then it would be done. Um, so I'm looking at no residual increment remaining. Uh, there is sufficient increment in TIF 3 and a transfer from TIF 6 to all, not only cover the outstanding debt, but also to pay back the city's debt service, um, about 853,000 dollars that the taxpayers paid for debt service at one point in time. So, um, in the next, uh, updated, um, financial projection of the TIF 3, it shows that, uh, the recommendation is that there'll be one more increment next year than, next slide, yeah. There'll be one more increment and then it will be closed. So the next TID I have on the schedule is TIF 6. Um, this is the Foxfire area. Uh, it's been donating to, um, TIF 3 and it did to TIF 5 to pay its debt, um, service. Um, it is still available for expenditures to 2022. Um, what we are looking at here is, um, 24.9 million of incremental value that would be returned to the tax roll. Um, we would, we look at, uh, closing this TID next year if council agrees with the recommendation. We've been working with the groundwater study and possible outlay, um, of capital yet in this area to help the homeowners. Uh, we're looking at working with the county on acquiring some of the tax foreclosure properties in that, um, TID. And, um, if we did close this TID, we would be under 12%, which, uh, would allow us to do a lot more with what TIDs we have remaining or to be able to set up another TID district. Um, we need to have about 30 million in incremental value returned back to the tax roll. So that's TIF 6. And again, I'm looking at paying back debt service, uh, about a half a million dollars. Um, I'm looking at, uh, paying, um, the TIF 3 debt with this and there would be no residual, um, increment to distribute to the other taxing jurisdictions. The next TID is TID 9. Uh, this is a, a small TID that was created for the buyer's guide at one point, thinking that there'd be some, some, uh, development. Uh, it's in a negative increment right now. It's past its expenditure period in 2019. Um, even though the foundry has come, uh, has purchased it and has, uh, we've seen some increase in the, um, in the value of the property. It's still, uh, at a half a million dollars below increment, uh, base. So, um, there isn't any, um, need for this TID. Uh, all the increment that was there generated in the early part of this TID was transferred to TIF 10 to retire its outstanding debt early. So, uh, we took advantage of the ability to transfer to TIF 10 with this, uh, and have, uh, used it to pay, um, debt service off with TIF 10. Um, so this would be definitely a, a recommendation to close because it, it, there's no reason to have it continue to be open. Um, as you can see, it doesn't generate an increment. It has minimal, uh, personal property, uh, taxes, aides coming in. Um, so it, it's, it's doing its job. The next TID would be TID 4, which is Western Avenue. That's where Pick and Save McDonald's area is. Um, this is a, a very, uh, active TID as far as values concerned. Uh, this still has an expenditure period till 2022. So, um, any, any continued, um, development could, could still be supported with this TID. Um, it has a 29.3 million dollar increment value that would, could be returned to the tax roll. Um, but, uh, right now, it, most of the money is used to pay off the debt for TIF 8. Um, and there's some small debt that 4 still has, but, um, it's not that big of an impact. Um, we are going to be recommending right now, um, to kind of still monitor, but the first scenario would be to close this TID in 2025, uh, transfer and partially repay the advance for, from the water utility. Uh, it's about $2 million that the PSC is requiring. It's about $2 million that the PSC is requiring us to do, and there might be a partial advance from the sewer repaid back. The additional debt service tax levy that was used would not be repaid. Another option would be is to keep this open until 2032, which is almost the end of the life of the TID. Transfers would repay all of the water advance of 2.9 million, pay the sewer back 3.6 million, and also pay back the debt service 1.6 million, which would be used for, to me, would be used for retiring some of the outstanding debt that the city has. So there is the option that there is, there's still some use for TIF four, but we'll have to continue to monitor the economy and how everything's going, but there would be some benefit to keeping it open till the end. And so this TID would have been open till 2032, but I'm giving a projection in the next slide that it would close in 2026 with the last increment, and there would be no residual increment to distribute to the other taxing jurisdictions. TID eight is the East Gateway. This TID is past its expenditure period of June of 2019. Anticipating closing date would be 2031, 32, if we kept it open till the end. It has seen an increase. The 2020 incremental value is 10.6 million. The premier apartment buildings added $4 million worth of incremental value, and we still have all of the housing stock that's going in in that subdivision to be realized. So I'm looking at continuing increment coming in for TIF eight. We could close, like I said, early 2025 with transfers from TID and do some prepayments or repayments, or we could give, go out to 2031 and pay back both utilities and debt service. And it's going to be a lot based on how much economic development transfers come from TIF four to TIF 10. So this one, we're just going to keep watching and monitoring to make sure. But I did put in the two scenarios within the, if you did keep it open, and how it would pay back till the end of the TID. TID 10 is Badger Street. That includes the rec center and the school district. This one has a final expenditure period of 2023. We are looking at only about 2.6 million of value. We really need to have some development at the St. Mary, Old St. Mary's Church site to realize some incremental value in this TID. We have repaid back the debt service fund with $36,000 that was used for some of that. We still have some transfers from four for the business improvements within the downtown area. So this one could remain open until the end at 2028. So this one, we just are kind of watching and seeing how, if we can get some development on the St. Mary's site. If you look at the projection worksheet, we keep it open. There is enough increment to look at projecting some value out to do a development agreement or to even help with clearing the site with St. Mary's. So there's, there would be about 300,000 or 400,000 in increment generated over the life of the TID without that development. So otherwise, the best news I have is that if you, the council did look at closing TIF two and, sorry, in 2022, TIF three, six, and nine, we would be at 9.1%. And based on my, using the 2020 tax rate calculation worksheet, the tax rate would go down $2.69.
So the, thank you, Kathy. So the big thing, of course, is that we are still above that 12%, so we're not able to do any more TIDs, even if we wanted to in the future.
Or amend what we have.
Yeah, and so we need to get below that, and that's the importance of paying off this debt as quickly as we can and closing some of these TIDs so that we can get below that. Now, we are, we are obviously seeing some increase in valuation in all of these TIDs, so that's helping us too to get below that 12% too, but we need these TIDs to close. And am I right to Kathy that TID 10 is the TID that we're using to help fund the downtown revitalization?
Yes, there, and if you look at the TID 10, there is about a million, there is a million dollars being transferred from four into TIF 10 to do the business improvement grants. So that's already figured in on this, because that was the maximum that we were looking at for funding that. So, but there wasn't any business improvement being left in TID four, though, to do anything. We're transferring a whole million dollars out for TIF 10.
Thank you. I know that this is, when we talk TIDs, TIFs, and TID districts and so on, they're very confusing, and they're probably even more confusing for people that have not been on council for very long. So if you do want to get some more history on that, you know, feel free to stop in and see Kathy, or, I mean, the history part of it, I think I can, I can help you out a little bit too. I've been on the, on the council since the inception of almost all of these TIDs too, so I can tell you why they were started and what we did in those TIDs too, and I think that will help you to fully understand it better. So I know if you're just seeing it for the first time or only seeing it once a year, it can be a little confusing, how it works and how the funds stay within those TIDs to be able to use to do infrastructure and stuff like that. So I don't want to bore you with going through the whole process, but if somebody would like to find out more about how you use TIDs and how we've used the TIDs, I'm more than willing to share that with you, so. And Kathy is too, I'm sure.
Yeah, and we're in a good position with the TIDs, you know, compared to the six years ago when I came in here. I think having these plans and doing these projections and doing, you know, being able to be in a good financial position to refinance the debt that was out there has really helped us a whole lot in being able to come to this point where, you know, we weren't looking at these TIDs being closed, that now we are in a position that, you know, we can return almost $30 million worth of value back to the tax, other taxing jurisdictions, and hopefully they will take advantage of it and not increase their levy. So I think that that's, that's the biggest thing is what, what we can do, but have no control over what the other taxing jurisdictions can.
But if you were to look at it, the way we could reduce our taxes, they could also reduce their taxes, once it's on the books again, because then they'll start getting their share at that time too. So there's a chance that that's what could happen there. I do want to, and Kathy's right, you know, six years ago, when Kathy first came here, the, we had some major debt in, in the TIDs, and over the last six years, Kathy's done a great job of handling, paying off the debt as quick as possible. But I don't want us to forget that the one TID that really put us in bad position was TID eight, and that's the one out by the airport. And I want to always tell people that we've put a lot of money into infrastructure out there, and the bypass county highway A that crosses over highway 10 saved lives. You know, that was the most dangerous, you can ask Paul probably, probably the most dangerous intersection that we ever had in our county. So we saved lives there. We also were able to put in that 5,000-foot runway, a project with that. We put in water and sewer out in those, in that TID eight. Yeah, did we overexpend maybe at that time, but for safety reasons and also to improve the airport, it made a lot of sense at that time. And I always like to remind people too that we actually received a national award for that project that we did out at the airport, where we actually took the dirt, it's funny, we actually took the dirt from the airport and used it to use, to make the overpass over highway 10 there too. And we actually, yeah, we, so we got a national award. We got a picture of it. Is it here or is it? Yeah, it's right behind Scott Pritchatsky, actually, is the award that we received for that. So a lot of good things happened, even though we, we were in a tough situation. But it all looks like it's getting better and we're obviously going to continue to move forward. Sorry for my lecture there.
You know, Mayor, if you hadn't said it, I was going to.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, really. It is, it's a great story, actually, now. It wasn't such a fun story back then, but it's a great story now.
I mean, for years, TID eight was the pariah, the black sheep of the family, and now to see things working out is just amazing, as far as I'm concerned. And all of these TIDs have had a, a story behind them and a use that, once you get into, you can fully appreciate why they're there.
Yeah, thanks for that, Paul. Anybody have any questions, any more questions of Kathy or comments? All right, so she's going to make a similar presentation to the Joint Review Board next week, and the Joint Review Board is made up of one council member, the mayor, one council member, who I think is Dimitri, if I remember right, and then Kathy, school district?
School district, county, and technical college.
All right.
And then one citizen.
Okay, and one citizen at large. Okay, anything else on that? Thanks, Kathy, you did a great job there. Communications recommendations of the mayor. I just want to repeat what Aaron talked about before, July 6th. I, you know, this is, you know, we're not having a council meeting, but we are going to go and look at public works facilities and stuff like that. I think that's, that's something that will be really neat for us to all to do. I do want to make sure that you get to the parking lot, the city parking lot, on time so that we can all get on the buses together there. It will make for a smoother transition throughout the night. If you really do want to travel in your own vehicle, I guess you can do that, but again, I think we all ride together, we'll be able to make it, it run more smoothly and quicker that way. So appreciate if you could do that. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting tonight? We're looking for a motion to adjourn. Paul Hagan?
Second.
Second. Dimitri Martin to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting.
I don't have to.
He waved. Yeah, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We're adjourned at 8:24 PM.